Are we ready? Thank you. Welcome to tonight's Muskogee Municipal Authority Meeting, September the 23rd, 2024. First, we'll start with invocation and flags, flag salutes. May we rise, please? Dear Lord, thank you for watching over our community. Muskogee is a blessed city, and we have much to be thankful for. I believe we have some wonderful opportunities to grow and improve our city. I'm looking forward to our council and supportive and caring citizens working together to make Muskogee a wonderful place to live and raise children. Please continue to guide our council and give them the strength and determination to do the good work they were elected to do, in Jesus' name. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the Oklahoma flag suit.
I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It signals peace and nightfall people.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale. Dan Hall.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Tracy Hous.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Okay. This is regular agenda. Item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of August 26, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending August 30, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, you have before you the claims. We directly approve them. We're happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. We will now call to order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Item number two, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
No.
Item number one. I don't know if I'm okay.
Consider approval of minutes of August 26, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item number, the motion passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for August 17, 2024, through September 13, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, you have the claims before you. We do recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
How many years have we done the Blue Pest?
We started, I believe, in 2018 or 2019. I have to go back and look. And there's been, I think, one, one year during the pandemic that we didn't hold it.
How much does this cost the city each year to put on?
It varies from, from year to year. I can get you a financial report for this year if you'd like.
I asked for that earlier in a text, and I did not get that. So I thought I'd ask tonight. And I'd like to know how much also we've made each year from this. And I also would like to know how many free tickets and how many people getting free to this event. And see if it's feasible for the city to continue this event.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
No.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. We'll now adjourn. We will now call to order the Muskogee City Council meeting, September 23, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Okay. Now ask for a motion to excuse Shirley and Tom.
Submit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Next is the approval of the minutes.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Let's see, next is consent agenda, which is items number one through six. Does anybody want any of these to be moved, or are we ready to go to the regular agenda?
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Okay. Regular agenda. Item number seven, please.
Receive presentation of financial audit for City of Muskogee Foundation for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and take other necessary action.
Yes, we have our friends from the City of Muskogee Foundation here to present the audit. Nancy Gayden is their representative. We're happy to see her and welcome her to the podium to present the audit. Thank you. Okay. Your turn. I assume you have the whole report in your packet, but I wanted to first comment that we received the highest form of assurance. We received an unqualified opinion. And again, this is for the year ending June 30, 2024. And so that's what you can see under the independent auditor's report. Then, if you will turn to the statement of financial position, this just gives you a recap of what our assets were at June 30, 2024, compared to June 30 of 2023. So we had $150 million roughly at the end of 2024, compared to $144 million at the end of 2023. And another noteworthy item on that is that our grants payable decreased about $2.6 million during the year. So that means that we paid down many grants during the year and wanted to point that out. If you turn to the following page, under the statement of activities, we had a much better year in 2024 compared to 2023. In 2023, our investments went down by roughly $18.5 million in the market that year. But happy to report in 2024, we had a positive unrealized gain of $8 million. So we had total revenues of about $14.5 million, and we had total expenses of just under $5 million, which left an increase in assets of almost $9.7 million for the year. And then, any of the other schedules are more detailed to the amounts included on the pages I've already spoken about. And then, the last pages are all of our particular accounting policies that you can read about. And I'm happy to address any questions that anyone has.
Any questions?
It's just need to approve. Move for approval?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Good job. Thank you. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Jamie Stout. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number eight, please.
Consider approval of amended ordinance number 3939A, an ordinance setting out the requirements, qualifications, and terms for members of the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board as set out in Section 18-484 of the City of Muskogee Code of Ordnances, and the residency requirements of members, or take other necessary action.
Okay, this was Counselor Shirley Hilton Flannery, and I'm here in her place. We talked about this at our Public Works meeting. This is something that Shirley's looked into and would like to do. Do we entertain a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number nine, please.
Consider approval of amended ordinance number 4159A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordnances, Chapter 3, City Council Ethics, Article 2, Ethics, amending Section 3-11, Use of Cellular Phones and Recording Devices Prohibited, Adding Repealer, Severability, Codification, and Setting an Effective Date, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This was at our Northwest Public Works and Finance meeting, and it was approved. And this is our second reading, so this is a requirement of law. And this ordinance change will relieve us of the obligation to turn over our cell phones during executive sessions and being on our, on the honor system to not repeat things said in the executive session. Since phones are like mini computers nowadays, we look up ordinances, we look up charter provisions during council meetings, and this prevents us from doing business.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 10, please.
Consider approval of amended ordinance number 4229A, an ordinance of the City of Muskogee by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commissions, Division 12, Municipal Employees Retirement Board, Section 2-471, Membership, Election and Qualifications, Section 2-472, Terms and Representation by Department, Section 2-473, Absences and Vacancies, Providing for Codification, Repealer, Severability, and Setting an Effective Date, or take other necessary action.
Mayor, members of council.
Yes, ma'am.
And this was approved at Public Works last meeting as well. All this does is change the ordinance to get rid of the time constraints on elections, and staff recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 11.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3010, a resolution approving and adopting an amendment to the Muskogee Tourism Authority Bylaws, Section 2.2B, Increasing Terms of Office for Trustees to a Seven-Year Term, or take other necessary action.
This is another item brought up by Counselor Shirley Hilton Flannery. And I told her I'd bring this up this evening.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Hold on, I have a like to.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
So what they want to do is extend these terms out to seven years for each board appointment. You know, my biggest problem with that is that, you know, if I, if I was to leave the council that's elected behind me, we're kind of taking that appointment away from them. And I really don't understand why it couldn't be the four years and then if they could be reappointed for another four years, if that council, if that, if that council would like them to do that. That's actually just seven years. That's really, that's doing it. It doesn't do it justice for anybody. It doesn't provide any advantage to Tourism Authority. But what it does is just keeps the people that's there. And even if the new council members come on, they're stuck with them, even if things aren't going like it should. So I disagree with this.
And Dr., I agree with you. This is something that we've been working on and pulling off and working on. I think he's made a lot of good points. I've thought about some other ones regarding this. If someone would like to amend this to a four-year term with an option for their board to ask for another four-year term on a person or individual, and also, obviously, the council will be able to approve or not approve that individual. So it would be a total of eight years instead of seven. But if they don't participate, or if things aren't working well, after four years, your relationship is terminated with a board member that may or may not be helpful. And that would, that sure seems like a smart way to go about it to me.
And Mayor, if I can just jump in real quick, the current term is for five years.
Right.
And they're wanting to change it to seven from five.
Well, like Dr. Who said, four years sounds like a fair enough deal. And if, for whatever reason, maybe somebody's working on a new tourism deal and they've headed up the show or whatever, then they can ask the council to vote in that particular person for another four years. Otherwise, they're four-year terms. So, so if it's somebody that's needed or helpful or really involved with something that they sure would like to see him stay, they have that opportunity. But otherwise, they can keep, I think, the board much more efficient and, and up today.
Yes, sir. And I was just trying to clarify, you're both referencing the, the current four-year term, but it's a current five-year term.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear.
No, no, thank you for that. It is, it is currently a five-year. So instead of changing it to seven years, it would be to four and the possibility of four more, however that would be written up.
Does that have to go back to Tourism Board for approval?
I believe it would.
Yes.
I recommend that we send that back. There's a motion, though, in a second, so.
Now, you know, let's keep in mind that this is not the first group that have come to us, and we have, you know, and then there's also groups that have seven-year terms already existing. So this is not something new. And, you know, just keep in mind of the mindset of how we got to this item, you know, trying to keep people on and keep people serving in these capacities with these, with these groups. I'm okay with amending it, but I'm, I'm just saying, just keep in mind that there have been groups just in the last couple of months that have come to us that we approved of.
That's, that's, that's a good point in itself.
We're sending this one back, and then, you know, we passed some last month, you know, for the same reasons that, that tourism has.
The only, it, it, I think it depends on the leadership of each particular board. I get the sense that this board would be receptive to four and four, because I'm certainly not wanting to jam this down their throat. And if they would be receptive to four and four, then maybe it's the thing to do.
Mayor, you do sit on that board?
Yes.
So isn't this at the discretion of those boards, though? I think that, I, I, I agree. I understand what you're saying, but I think we're taking away kind of the control of the board and what they wanted to do. And I agree with the deputy mayor. We already did this for another board last month. So we probably should have thought about this before we did those, because I think this will send a mixed signal, but I don't know.
The ones that we did previously, though, that was with the Muskogee Medical Trust. And to me, that's apples and oranges. We're there, they're in the middle of a big deal with the construction of a multimillion-dollar hospital that all this group of people that are currently working with. You know, so to me, it makes a lot of sense why we want to keep them there. But with this, it'd go with our other trust boards. I feel like just letting the same people sit on there over and over and over, it doesn't do a service to our citizens. We had a gentleman speak not too long ago that, you know, he'd like to see some new faces come through. And we give, other council members said we had five new council members, four new council members elected, you know, give them opportunities to feel whatever point, too.
I agree. I'm just throwing it out there that we've already done, but if they, if we send them back and they approve it.
I think that might happen.
Think so?
I think so.
All right, let's give it a go. Well, for, for procedural, we have a current motion on the floor to approve. So we do need to either pull that back, withdraw that motion, or take a vote.
Would everybody be okay with withdrawing the motion? Would somebody like to make a motion, and we'll take a vote?
And the motions on the floor, Mayor, just for clarification, so that the body will have to vote to withdraw it.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to withdraw that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, man, do you mind if I do this on the motion and second on the floor?
Not if there's a, not if the body calls the motion. The body has to, and the whole, would have to call the motion.
So we have a motion and a second.
To, to withdraw the first motion.
To withdraw the first motion.
Pardon me, Katrina, if you don't mind, withdrawing that motion would then do what? Allow another, open the floor for other motions or what?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear what happens. I thought the first motion and second had to be voted on first.
Not if the, not if the, if someone else wants a motion to withdraw who was the original motion maker, and then the body okay's it. So the first person makes the motion, once they put it on the floor, they can't withdraw the motion. They have to see the permission of the body to withdraw their motion.
We can either go through a vote and vote down, or?
I'm just trying, yeah. It's just, we've done it too, we, we haven't done it this way before. The, the motions had to be voted on before a new motion can be made.
Yeah. If you're doing two separate type motions, but this motion relates to the first motion. So the easiest way to do it would be to actually do the roll call on the first motion, and then everybody deny it if that's what they want to do, then recalling a motion, make it cleaner.
So I'm going on the first motion, I'm just going to vote no, so that, that we're denying it, and then follow up with a motion of seeing it back with a four and four. So we would vote no this first round, and that would clarify, then we can follow up with another motion.
Yes. That's the cleanest way to do it.
So do we need to recall, do we need to withdraw this motion to withdraw that motion?
No, just take a vote on this. Take a, take a vote. Take a vote on the first motion.
This is the first motion, but you've got this motion.
Did he actually make the motion? Oh, was he actually made the motion, and you need to vote to recall it?
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second to, to withdraw the original.
Okay. Then you need to vote on that.
So what is a yes vote, then?
So a yes vote on this one.
Recalls it.
Recalls this second motion.
Opens the floor to further discussion.
Listen.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes.
So the, the motion to withdraw passes. To withdraw this motion.
To withdraw the second motion, and then you vote on the first motion, which is to approve.
No, the first motion was withdrawn.
That was to withdraw the first motion. We just voted yes to withdraw the first motion. So it's open.
It's like three-part material.
It's open at the moment.
So the floor is open, yes. Okay, thank you.
So.
Now we need to make a motion to send it back, and, and that, is that how we do it now?
Yes, sir.
Now, what we got to do?
No, we, we did, we did a motion to withdraw the first motion or the second motion?
The first motion.
First motion.
You did a withdrawal of this.
Okay, now the floor is open.
Yes.
So now we can make a motion now to send it back to Tourism?
Yes.
To see if they would accept through their board on the four-four? To see if they would accept through their board on the four-four? I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Okay, and I'm sorry, clarify that motion one more time for me.
To send it back to the tourism board, for them to vote on if they would take the four by four, instead of the seven.
So a yes is to return it to the tourism board?
Yes.
Okay. Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes, ma'am.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Motion passes. Boy, it's nice to have a challenge over now. Thank you, everybody. Item number 12.
Consider approval of the acquisition of a 20-foot-wide utility easement across property generally described as 2402 North Main Street for the construction and maintenance of a sanitary sewer force main to serve the Muskogee Creek Nation facility on East Harris Road or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
So that is actually on North Main Street, and it's on the east side of Main Street, that easement, and to remind you, we've been working with St. Francis Hospital to do away with their lagoon, so that they could add, come into the city sanitary sewer system. St. Francis sold the Creek Nation, Creek Nation picked up that project and wants to go ahead and discontinue that lagoon system and come into the city sewer system. They in turn are going to put a lift station in, which they're going to own, and we're going to help them with assistance by doing the maintenance on it, and they will pay the repair bills. This easement is needed to put the force main along Main Street, so that they can tie into one of our existing manholes on the sewer system approximately right there south of FedEx. This parcel that's in question right now is going to be acquired by the Creek Nation with Hub's assistance, and then it will be an easement that will allow the city to maintain that sewer system. So this is parcel one, and it is located at the 2402 North Main Street, which is just south of the FedEx facility. We do recommend approval, and I'll answer any questions.
Will anybody else be able to tie into it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a piece that I left out, Mr. Hall, I appreciate you bringing that up. This will add to the property up to the north of there, which will allow sewer system for them as well.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 13, please.
Consider approval of the acquisition of a 20-foot-wide utility easement across property generally described as 2420 North Main Street for the construction and maintenance of a sanitary sewer force main to serve the Muskogee Creek Nation facility on East Harris Road or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
This is another parcel that needs to be acquired. This one is just north of FedEx and actually touches their property on the south end. This is another piece that needs to be acquired, and we do recommend approval.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 14, please.
Consider approval of the acquisition of a 20-foot-wide utility easement across property generally described as 2330 North Main Street for the construction and maintenance of a sanitary sewer force main to serve the Muskogee Creek Nation facility on East Harris Road or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, mayor and council, this is the third piece that we need to acquire. This is also an easement for that sanitary sewer line, and just to update, Creek Nation is paying all costs, and we will just simply inherit maintenance on this when it's done. Ownership and maintenance on where the easements are inside the city limits, so do recommend approval, and I'll answer any questions. This is FedEx's property, by the way, this parcel.
I will say that I'm excited for the Creek Nation and the Medical Center. I don't think it could have worked out better out there with the facility. It's a big win for the creeks and a big win for the community.
As they told me, they're into healthcare and not the sewer maintenance on a lagoon system.
And I'm sure we're happy to accommodate them.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Item number 15.
Consider approval of the recommendation from Cowan Group Engineering to award the lowest and best bid for the CDBG waterline improvements, project number 2023008, to Cook Consulting LLC in the amount of $392,459.63 or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council. So this project, we've talked about a couple of times over the last few years. It is a waterline replacement project to replace, originally to replace a six-inch water line along Elgin Avenue from US 64 to 32nd Street, and then another portion of an eight-inch line along Cherokee Street from Highway 165 to West 33rd Street South to Hancock. Over the years, we've gone through, got approvals in this body to seek out the grant, go through the process, and go through the bidding process to do this project. We finally got the project out to bid in July of this year. When we got that bid back, we received one bid from Cook Consulting in the amount of around roughly $1.2 million. This was due to, there was a small confusion on how much funding we actually were receiving in this project. We were receiving about a little over $400,000 total between the Department of Commerce grant and the city match. And so in order to continue to use these funds, we requested that the single bidder from Cook Consulting to reduce the scope of work from Elgin and Cherokee to just Elgin, so that it fit the amount of the grant that we received in the amount of $392,459.63. Because they were the only bidder that submitted a bid to the project, we did have to receive a single bid authorization from the Department of Commerce, which the Department of Commerce granted, given the increased material costs and the scope of work for the project due to this project originally being done towards the beginning of COVID, and now we're sitting post-COVID, where supplies and main labor costs are much more expensive. So with that approval from the Department of Commerce on the single bid, we also had to extend our contract, which expired on September 9th, to complete the project, and the Department of Commerce also extended our contract to a completion date of March 9th, 2024, which Cowan Group and Cook Consulting believe they can complete the work within that timeframe and allow us to close out the grant. So that's a lot of background to kind of remind you guys what we're talking about, because this has been a multi-year process, but this item is to approve that bid for $392,459.63 to complete the six-inch waterline project that runs along Elgin Avenue. If you have any other questions about the grant specifics, I'll be able to help you with those, and if you have any technical questions about the project, Mr. Stewart will be able to address, take those questions. City does recommend approval, and we'll take any questions.
So, mayor, if I might, I'd like to add, please. So this is actually going to replace 1,530 lineal feet of six-inch water line that will go from 25th to 30th Street on Elgin Street, and that was identified through our water model, water model study that we did with Cowan a while back, where they went in and reviewed all our major water leaks and decided what lines needed to have priority. So this line is one that has priority to replace a six-inch line and was recommended so through the water model, so that's how it was determined to replace that line.
Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I just, and I apologize that I didn't do my background on this, and I've heard some key words that I just got to get clarification on, lowest bid, cutting the project instead of going all the way to Junction, we're going to just do an Elgin part. I just want to make sure that this is going to still, make sure that things are quality in that area, because you're hidden in my neighborhood now, so I got to make sure I got to understand it.
Yes, so we, the materials and scope of work didn't change from that original estimate, and this is, we just had to cut the scope of work back to fit the grant cost, so the materials and the work itself will still be of a high quality.
And this was the most needed section of that line?
So what will we have to do to extend the rest of it? Do you apply for another grant, or how does that work?
So the second half, we could potentially look at doing with another CDBG grant after this one is finalized and closed down, and we're eligible for another Small Cities Grant or other type of funding to CDBG or others. This was recognized, as Mr. Stewart says, as part of our capital improvement projects.
Right.
And so there might be other technical aspects that Mr. Stewart might be looking at trying to fund.
So Ms. Cranford, as we move forward, anything that comes available funding-wise, that's the first thing we'll be looking at is that section of water line.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm excited, even though it's 1,500 lineal feet, because if you know, when I ran for city council, that one of the things is, is the not-so-pretty stuff in Muskogee, the sewer and water lines, and it's a win, but it's not a win-win, because, you know, we'd like to see it go all the way to Junction. We like to see all of our water lines replaced in our city, and we know it's a financial issue with a lot of this, but, man, I wish our foundation would give you another million dollars just to run the rest of it, and let's just keep going, and use all that money that we can use to get those water lines fixed. I'm sorry, did I say that out loud? Yes, I did.
Thank you both for your work on this. Any other questions?
Do we need to move for approval?
Yes, sir.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item passes. Item number 16.
Consider approval of a five-year agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for body worn cameras for the Muskogee Police Department in the amount of $403,150.80, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement or take other necessary action.
Chief Teeh.
Mayor and council, that's the newest version of the Axon Body Camera, which I believe takes, would come to us in September. It's a five-year plan, the foundation agreed to pay for the first year of it.
Any questions for chief?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and second. Roll call.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Just keep standing there.
He's the next to her, Hughes. The next to her.
Oh, my gosh. Relax and stay a while. Item number 17, please.
Consider approval for the Muskogee Police Department to accept a donation from Cherokee Nation in the amount of $5,000 or take other necessary action.
Chief.
This is a donation that we got from Councilor Dobbins and Cherokee Nation that we will use for equipment for our gym.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item passes. Item number 18, please.
Consider approval to authorize the Muskogee Police Department to apply for, and if approved, accept the 2024 Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $34,552 or take other necessary action.
Chief.
This is a grant that we apply for every year. It was a little late in coming this year, but it's for $34,000 and change, and we split that with the county, and we use our $17,000 and change for computers for our cars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Great job, chief.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, if I may, before we wrap up number 18, I'd just like to point out to the council that those last four agenda items all featured the city pursuing and getting additional funds from grants and outside sources, and I want to thank Chief Teeh, thank the Public Works team and the Planning Department, they're out looking for extra dollars all the time, and we should acknowledge that when it happens, and those last four items all do that, so I wanted to give them some public recognition for those items as we move forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, great work, everybody. Okay, I guess now we've got some folks that have signed up to speak. Welcome, and we've got.
Handouts.
You sure?
Mark Hughes, 907 Nelson Drive. What you have in front of you is just a portion of this administrative policy concerning sewage-backwater prevention device assistance program that will provide homeowners $1,500 to purchase a backwater device, and it's signed by the city manager. This is basically in response to a collapsed 120-year-old sewer line in a historic district that flooded some homeowner's basement with two and a half feet of a fluent. There are, however, some catches to this policy. The cost is more like $5,500 to $12,000 for the backwater flap, it could be more expensive. If the city's failed, sewer line is deeper, like maybe you had a basement, or a pool, or the state line is older for those houses that are in free statehood area. These old houses are grandfathered in to avoid modern construction cost upgrades. You would have to bring your part of the sewage system up to code, which could exceed $50,000 to $100,000 for the homeowner. In the property owner certification and release form, it contained indemnification language that the homeowner agrees to hold the city harmless, not to sue, not to pursue any insurance claim against the city, quote, "from any damage, damages due to the discharge of sewage and/or groundwater onto or on the above property prior to or after installation of said backflow prevention equipment." So the city here is really covering the rear end. This means that the homeowner cannot sue the city or hold it at fault for any spillage of stormwater sewage caused by the city. The homeowner cannot get remediation for the damage the city has already caused or will ever cause in the future. Then the document reads, "I certify that all discovered sump pumps, downspouts, and foundation drains have been disconnected from the sanitary lateral and released and indemnified to find a halt harmless and agree not to sue the city from flooding due to any unknown or missed connections." This means that if the city screws up a homeowner's system, the homeowner will have no recourse, and the city can make the homeowner upgrade a 1906 house to current code. And there's more. The contract reads, "I also agree to transfer this certification and release to future owners of the above property." This means that if a homeowner and the owner's plumbing contractor are bound to the deplorable conditions and restrictions forever, and if a homeowner does sell the home, the future owners and their plumbing contractors are bound to these deplorable conditions and restrictions forever, and the same for the next homeowner and the next homeowner add in to that item. So why should someone purchase a home, historical home in Muskogee with these draconian regulations? Can you imagine Muskogee's historical home being empty for months or years, because no one wants to purchase it under these conditions? I would hope the city council would talk to the city manager, having laid out the exact problems, what the city's responsible for fixing, the resources necessary to do that, the cost of the project, and to figure out how to fund this project. This is a good policy for the city, but a bad policy for the homeowner and your constituents. It needs to be canceled, and the situation properly is addressed, and the sewer line's fixed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes. Next, we have, is this the Shazer family?
The Shazer family cannot be present.
Okay. Next, Mr. Crawford.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, if you wouldn't mind stating your name.
Charles Crawford. I would like to address the council and the elected officials about. buildings in four different locations across the city. I took the liberty of hiring Accurate Environmental Laboratories and Dr. Carol Becker of Edmond, Oklahoma, who is a certified hydrologist that I've worked with, with the EPA and the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the past. Some of the first results are now in. I had the water at my place of business at 2601 West Broadway tested, and from the tap and the tap water sample had a content of three VOCs, volatile organic compounds, were detected. And pardon my pronunciation, because even me being a geologist, these are difficult words to pronounce. Bromo-dechylomethane chloroform defibrochloromethane collectively known as trihalomethanes. These compounds form when chlorine used for disinfection by the city of Muskogee reacts with natural organic matter in water. Natural organic matter should not be in water. Water is two hydrogen molecules and one oxygen molecule. This has been occurring since 2019. The city has consistently failed tests.
Mr. Crawford, your time's up, but I know that you wanted to meet with some of us after the council meeting here tonight, and we'll be available to meet with you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mike Stewart. Please repeat your name only.
Mike Stewart. So Mr. Crawford mentioned our water quality, and as the council knows, we have invested a lot of money in our water quality in the last several years, over 17 million to improve our water quality. The city, along with countless cities across the nation, struggle with TTHMs and HAA5s, which are a chlorine disinfectant byproduct usually related to age in water. And if you remember, we've been up here many times presenting projects that will address that. And just here recently, in the last four weeks, ODEQ actually came and met with city staff, along with the rural water representatives that we supply water to, and commended the city of Muskogee on the improvements made through our capital improvement plan. Very pleased to hear that. In the last two years, we haven't failed any of these tests, and they actually brought graphs that showed as we spent our 17 million dollars, that trend went up, and our water quality is continually getting better. We just improved our chlorine dioxide system at the water treatment plant, which is going to help further improve the THM/HAA issue. So we're very pleased with the water that we're producing right now. We've also added 2 million of the ARPA funding to the city's water plant to ensure that we have our pumps and our storage capacities, which we currently have plenty of pumping capacity and storage capacity. So we're very pleased with the water quality. In the report that Mr. Crawford handed you, if you read the email that went along with the report, we also exceeded all ODEQ standards for that water quality, and it is in his report, if he gave the email that he gave to Avery and myself. It says the city's water does meet and exceed the requirements. So the only place where his report says that it didn't is where he pulled it from the basement, and the basement shouldn't be tested against the standard drinking water. So that's a different area. We're very pleased with what we're producing. We're very pleased with our progress, and we feel like, or I do, I kind of take exception to the water quality because ours is good, and we're continually tested by ODEQ. We have daily samples that go out, and it gets tested. We also have Accurate Labs in Tulsa that assists and supplies the results to ODEQ, which is what ODEQ requires of cities. And if we don't do it properly, they'll be here, and you'll be the first one to know it, because, Mayor, you'll be the first one that'll get a letter that says we're not complying. We do comply. We're very pleased with all our results lately, and we are addressing our city sewer system as well. Kind of switched subjects. As I am very pleased with that backflow preventer system. That is something all these older houses need to have in their system so they don't have that sanitary CML backflow tool. I think that's something everybody should have, and I think it's a great program. And by the way, that's sponsored by Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, which is our, basically our insurance company, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And yes, from eight years ago, we've done really, really remarkable things where water quality is concerned, and I appreciate all the work you've done over those years. You've accomplished a lot. And, Mr. Rigney?
Thank you as well.
Now, we need to consider an executive session to discuss, take action.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Number 19. Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to an economic development project, including the possible transfer of real property and a proposal to entice the business to locate in the northwestern quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. B pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. C pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. D pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. E pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim, Number 10-22-7677, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. F pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim, Number 10-22-7679, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. G pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim, Number 10-22-7680, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
Move that we go into executive session?
Second. Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Thank you.[1093.66]
Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57. And if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. D pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local Number 2465. And if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. E pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim, Number And if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. F pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim, Number 10-22-7679. And if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. G pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim, Number 10-22-7680. And if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
Move if we go into executive session.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Thank you.